Okay, we're calling our commissioners meeting to order. Our invitation today is Commissioner William Pate.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear heaven and Father, thank you for another beautiful day. We're meeting here today to conduct matters of business. God has hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness right through in speech. In part your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. And if you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and approval of the minutes for October 20th and November 10th. Do have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay? And then discussion and any adjustments of our agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add, after our consent agenda, under new business, item number one, discussion of food distribution at the Maxwell Center.
And that'd be a new item as far as new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any other adjustments?
No, sir.
All right, and then we've got a special presentation.
I need a motion to accept.
Okay, I'm sorry. We need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, motion is approved. We've got the agenda agreed to. Okay, now we've got a video presentation from Public Affairs.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Wanted to talk to you guys for a quick second and talk about this Project Pearl that some of you guys are aware of. Project Pearl is what we called it. Pearls are the ultimate symbol of wisdom. It represents hidden knowledge, so the name was ideal. Couple of years ago, a program manager, program manager Ham, talked about renaming the conference room. And without hesitation, we knew the perfect person. We all worked closely with him, and he plays a significant role, not only with DSS, but all county departments. This conference room, he spends many hours discussing cases. So, Mr. Parker, can you join me? The one day that you missed the DSS board meeting, the idea was presented to the board, and there was no hesitation from the board, especially Mr. Mayo, who felt this was the best thing to do. There is no other man more deserving of this honor, and on behalf of all of us, we dedicate and rename the conference room in the Boarding Building on James Street after you. And because we can't be at the conference room, we presented a video so everybody wanted to see.
Joel, if you can hear me, it's not playing. No sound.
She can do it live.
She's here, she can do it live.
Oh, yeah, she does have a cutoff. She's got it over here.
So Brock's a key people here, as you can see, if you've got a look around.
That mute button right there, click it.
We're gonna do it the old-fashioned way. Here, maybe. Hey. See if that works. My apologies.
And when I heard the person we'll be working with a lot, there was a lot of... That was a position I didn't know much about, and when I heard the person we'll be working with a lot, there was a lot of, oh, wow, you'll be working with him.
And who is that?
That is Mr. Borden Parker.
One of the things I think about when thinking about Borden, or talking about Borden, or talking to Borden, is he's very personable. He's got a great sense of humor. It always impressed on me what a gentleman he is, because he's one of those guys that doesn't mind opening doors and pulling out chairs. And he shared all the stories that he shared about his late wife, and how much he loved her, and the respect he had for her. That's the thing that stuck with me the most about Borden.
He's very knowledgeable, he's very helpful, he cares about this county, and he's done a lot of work, very hard work, and I appreciate him.
He always has candy in his pocket, and he always offers this chocolate. And every time, it doesn't matter where I'm at, if he sees me in court, he always comes up to me and says, hey, do you want a bottle of water? Just randomly. So he just always makes sure that he takes care of people, makes sure that he's there for them, and just making sure he looks for how he can take care of other people and not necessarily how he takes care of himself.
It has been a complete honor and privilege. He has been a true friend, he has been someone who has looked after the children here at Wayne County, and even more importantly, he looks after the workers here at DSS as well.
It has been over a year or so we talked about naming this room after him, and we had to get the board's approval. And Borden does not miss a board, a DSS board meeting. But this one particular time, he had an appointment, and I will tell you, I rushed to the opportunity to be able to present it to the board and get up there and say, hey, you guys, we have been waiting for this moment. And I presented it to the board, and the board did not hesitate naming this room after him.
So I'm presenting to you this plaque, and on September 22nd, 2020, is the date we selected to name the conference room after you. And the reason behind that is nine, twenty-two, twenty equals fifty-one years you've provided legal services to this community. So we appreciate all that you do. And this plaque, we present to you in recognition of many years of exemplary legal services, devotion and commitment to Wayne County Department of Social Services. We hereby dedicate and rename Borden Building Room 114, located at 100 South James Street, Goldsboro, North Carolina, as the EB Borden Parker Conference Room. This is on behalf of the Wayne County Commissioners, Wayne County Department of Social Services Board, and Wayne County Department of Social Services staff.
Well, thank you, thank you. I'm honored. I'm afraid the picture will scare the children that you have in that room. But thank you, certainly, it's a surprise. And it's my pleasure to work with the department and the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Okay, our next item on special presentation is a presentation of plaques to Commissioner Edward Carmody, Commissioner William Pate, and Commissioner Adrian Worrell.
If I could have Commissioner Pate and Commissioner Carmody and Commissioner Worrell come out front, please.
While they're coming there, I must say, that's the first time I've heard the middle name of Borden Parker. I just saw it.
Again, on behalf of the commissioners and staff and the citizens of Wayne County, we want to thank you three gentlemen for your service to Wayne County. Especially this last year, it's not been an easy year for anybody, but it's been one that all three of you have led with dignity and honor and really tried to do the right thing for the citizens of Wayne County. So let me first say, Commissioner Pate, Commissioner Carmody, Commissioner Worrell. Again, if you don't know them well, as well as I do, they're three of the finest men that you'll ever meet. And Commissioner Pate was instrumental when I first got hired here. He was chair for a couple of years and working with Vice Chairman Gurley, and the work that Bill did, especially in leading the effort to get the Maxwell Center here in Wayne County. And I think that's probably one of the things Bill can be most proud of, is the work that he did with the ag community and also getting to the convention center here in Wayne County. Commissioner Carmody, if you don't know Commissioner Carmody, Commissioner Carmody is the biggest advocate you will ever meet for Southern Wayne County. Basically, Ed will fuss at you if you do not go past the bridge. But Ed's love for Wayne County, his love for education, his love for Mount Olive is really special for our community, and your leadership in the southern part will be missed. And Commissioner Worrell, even though he has only been on board since May, he came in at a very difficult time. Came right in at budget time, came right in the middle of COVID, came right in the middle of the loss of Commissioner Gurley, the Commissioner Mayo as well. But he really stepped in Commissioner Bell's seat. And it really, if you knew John well as well, there cannot have been a more perfect person to take John's seat than Adrian. And I appreciate the leadership that he has given us. But on behalf of the board and behalf of the staff, we would like to thank you three gentlemen. And I think our representatives have something they'd like to give you as well.
If Joel wants to get a picture of you presenting, take that off your ear.
Take that off your ear.
All right, if you hold your plaque up in front of you, and just look up here, he can take pictures from the control room. Excellent. All right, and now Senator Perry represents as well.
Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning. Senator Perry and I were discussing on something that we could do to honor the work and the time, energy, and effort you've put into making our community better. And so I had a chance to work with each of you over the years, and you know, you're outstanding gentlemen. And Mr. Carmody, Commissioner Carmody, I appreciate the work and advocacy you've done for my hometown, Mount Olive. And unfortunately, we're going to be lacking there, but I know you're still going to advocate day in and day out. Commissioner Pate, we've been working together for a long time, and you're already starting to look a little tan and happier with retirement. And Commissioner Worrell, you came in at a desperate time in our county and stepped right in and really picked it up, and we just can't thank you enough for everything you've done.
Service is a certain level of sacrifice, as all of you well know, and it's not about coming in with all of the answers, because no one has them. But it is about working together and trying to improve your community, and doing so with a level of dignity and respect that I think all three of you gentlemen have personified. So thank you for your service to our community and trying to do what you can to make Eastern North Carolina as a whole a better place.
So, what we like to do, now, it's not pretty, but we got it done. What we like to present to you is, on behalf of Senator Perry and myself, these flags will fall over the General Assembly Building in honor of your service to the state of North Carolina, but also Wayne County. So, Commissioner Worrell.
Thank you. Thank you. Question?
I don't know what to do with this.
I know I didn't give them a chance to talk, but I thought I would for a second. Guys, it's been a great privilege to be a commissioner in this county. If it were with a great bunch of other commissioners, then we've lost several key people, and we all miss them. But I want to thank the staff, because they have made my job so much easier. And I know you've got a lot of challenges ahead of you, we've made a lot of hard decisions over the years, and I think by far we've made the right decisions. We didn't make them all right, nobody can. God only made them perfect, I'm going to be anything that. But I'm sure that my gentleman back here, Chris Gurley, will step right in my spot, and life will go on. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Carmody, did you want to make some remarks?
It has been a, it has been a pleasure to serve mankind, representing specifically the southern part of Wayne County. There's a lot of, a long list of things that I could read off, but I would just want to highlight, maybe because of the beginning, I want to recognize J.D. Evans, of whom I, the reason I'm here, I stepped in to replace him, fill in for him. Southern Wayne County, Mount Olive, can be very proud of a library that J.D. started, a lot of people worked on that, Captain Brogdon back there and his family, my family, all of Mount Olive worked on raising a certain amount of seed money, I believe it could be called, and then the county stepped in, and I was part of helping to finish that project coming along behind J.D. A group of citizens in Mount Olive approached me one Sunday afternoon, said they had been trying to get a new gym at Southern Wayne for ten or fifteen years. We decided we would do something about it. The rest is history, I think, is going to be dedicated, that gym's going to be dedicated, if the date doesn't change, December the 2nd or somewhere about that. It is a very nice gym. Raleigh representatives, I know the money starts in Washington, comes through Raleigh and came on to us, but that's just a trail. We want to thank you all for any part, a great part that y'all played in it. My fellow county commissioners, I want to thank you for us staying together on that project, starting back around 2013. Joel was chairman at that time, and we had a sort of a lively conversation with the superintendent of schools that time, Dr. Dunsmore. And Southern Wayne project got sort of moved from down the road to close up the road. So we have a very nice gym that's going to be dedicated. One more thing I'd like to congratulate, and partner, saw with Mr. Acop. He is a great advocate for first responders. We have a real nice, new rescue building in Mount Olive area. Those are, over the next fifty years, people can ride past those buildings and see those buildings. And this is something that came during this tenureship with the main part of this board, and I just want to recognize them and say that. The last thing I would like to say is I appreciate the fact that my wife, Hilda P. Carmody, has always supported me doing what I do. As I left this morning, and she did her anointing. Last thing she told me, she said, be careful of what you say today. I told her I'm going to smile. There was never any rancor, there's never any hostility on this board, and the disagreements that we had, they were taken care of in the appropriate way, and so that when we came to meet the public, we met the public in a dignified manner. We were not always on the same page, we didn't vote 100% in any direction, but for Wayne County, we agreed on things that were important, and therefore got them done. And so I can't help but challenge the new board coming in, that it's Wayne County first. Service first. If you're not about service, forget this. But I've had a good run, and there's a whole lot of projects, there's hundreds of stuff that's waiting for me right now. So thank this board, thank Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Worrell, your turn.
Yeah, I would like to first thank my wife and my family for supporting me. When announcement first came that the board were considering appointing someone for Commissioner's Bell seat, I tossed and turned all night, a couple nights, a couple weeks probably, and just to make that decision. And I do want to thank my wife for her support and listening to all of my stories of the reason why I felt that I could not fill this seat of Commissioner Bell. But you know, from day one, coming on board, the commissioners were real receptive of me coming on board, and they actually answered my calls each day, gave me whatever I needed to do this job to the best of my abilities. Commissioner Carmody was instrumental in that also, listening to my conversations of how I felt and helping me think about things in a different way. And I want to thank Commissioner Pate for making the motion to appoint me to the commissioners' board, and I appreciate that. And I think that's it. Well, I can't leave out my...
I entertained you for several months.
Yeah, yeah, he's gonna, well, I think I'm gonna miss him on Tuesdays, because I always had a way of looking at Joe and kind of telling him, Joe, now, you're really going to take that? Come on, man. So, you know, just trying to, just egg Joe on a little bit, but I do appreciate you, and I appreciate you also, Mr. Acop. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we've got the appointment committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We, at our last meeting, we made recommendations, and I would like to act on them today. The first one is, the appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Harold Bashir to the Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors. And that's in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion for the reappointment of Harold Bashir. Any discussion on the motion?
We just got your recommendations today, all right?
No, this is, is this a recommendation, or is it actually a...
Today you're voting on Freda Brock, that's the other page, and then the ones we...
I got it backwards, I got it backwards.
Okay, so we're only recommending, these are recommendations...
These are recommendations. I had my sheet stack wrong.
No problem, no problem.
Let's go back and start all over.
Okay.
All right. At our last meeting, we made the motion to reappoint Freda Brock to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and that was at the last meeting, and that's in form of a motion.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that passes.
Okay, now we're going to get back on...
To the recommendations.
The recommendations for our next meeting.
Okay.
The board would like to recommend the reappointment of Harold Bashir to the Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors.
Okay.
All right. The second one, the appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Bill Pate to the Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors. Okay, all right. The third one, the appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Mr. Parker Sherwood to the Wayne County Board of Health, replacing Mr. Robert Kegwell. This comes as recommendation by the Board of Health. All right. The fourth one, the appointment committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Dustin Pike, Edward Davis, Charles Brogdon, Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance. And that's all we have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so these recommendations will be voted on at our next, actually voted on Monday, November 23rd. Okay. All right, our next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we've got several motions here. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, consent agenda has passed. Then we've added an item under new business, which will be the discussion of the food distribution at the Maxwell Center. This is a county matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The board is aware, there's been some discussion about options with respect to the food distribution that has been occurring at the Maxwell Center. We have done that really without any agreement to this point, it's just been kind of a word of mouth, but in talking with the attorneys, I think we need to do something a little bit more formal, and I think we have also had a request from Mr. Quick and 301 to go through December 31st, and I think Mr. Harson has some comments he would like to make as well.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to allow the 301 to continue the use of the Maxwell Center parking lot until December 31st. But it's all contingent on the execution of a minimum round of understanding that covers liability and traffic control, and a release of liability for the county. I'd put that in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and let's discuss this. Any discussion on this motion?
On the traffic control issue, and you're going to be talking about the community college?
We'll talk with the community college, but also the city of Goldsboro, their police department needs to be involved as well.
That's been a correctional issue, because it's been blocking traffic to call the immune adoptive officers in the hospital, and that's been the real issue.
And we find a solution, because I'm sure, you know, this is an important project. And the other thing is, we, when COVID first started, it was basically everything was shut down, and we did not know how long it was going to happen, we didn't know how long the distribution would occur, so we decided to allow them to go ahead and do this, because it was really a good location at the time, and everything was shut down. With the opening up of everything, now it has really caused a backup and some issues with the hospital and also with the community college. That's why we wanted to work and say that this really has outgrown our current site, and that we wanted to look at, trying, looking at other areas that may be not as traffic issues that we currently have at the Maxwell Center.
And could I ask what other options were discussed and offered?
We, you know, again, if the board approves this, we would still be working with them to hopefully look at either the Busman Building, which is at the corner of Dixie Trail and John Street, that the county owns, the parking lot there, but also they have been approved by the Fairground Board to do distribution at the fairgrounds out on 117. So we are working as close as we can to try to give them options, again, that it was a safety concern that we did have at the corner of Wayne... it, it was a safety concern that we did have at the corner of Wayne Memorial and New Hope.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And, and it's already been said, you know, that the need for this is not in question. I mean, it's, 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 it's a worthy cause. But my background in emergency services, I've been out on Wayne Memorial several Mondays when it was going on. And the, the problem that I have with it is the safety issue. I mean, it's, uh, EMS trucks, fire trucks, uh, they can't get through. And there, there is a solution, we just got to find a solution. But like I said, my, my biggest concern was the safety factor, uh, of someone getting hurt or possibly losing their life because of the congestion. So I think we're going in the right direction in, in trying to find an alternate, uh, uh, either try to reroute traffic out there somehow or another, or either the other, one of the other two locations. But, uh, my only concern was the, was the safety factor. Thank you.
Okay.
Same, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate our county manager on continuing to work and, and collaborate and discuss with, uh, all entities, the best solution that we can find for the distribution of food products to, uh, all the citizens of Wayne County. A few minutes ago, someone said that I advocated for the southern part of Wayne County. I did, I will continue to do so. Economics and, uh, uh, all kinds of documents that you can find says the southern part of Wayne County, uh, has a population that, uh, needs all the assistance that, uh, once you, yeah, there's a farming, uh, uh, skilled craft community and oftentimes those kind of things fluctuate with economy quicker than office jobs up in Goldsboro will. So people are in need south of the Neuse River. Uh, I'm pleased that I hear that options are being looked at after December 31st. And thank you for putting forth a resolution that speaks specifically to a timeline and letting everybody know what the timeline would be. I think sometimes communications is the greatest thing and sometimes not. Uh, uh, but if it's miscommunications, it's bad, it's good communications to solve the problem. Uh, over the last, uh, probably 25 or 30 years, I've been in and out of the fairground area every year and especially during fairground week. Uh, 30 to 40,000 patients come to the fairground between September 28th or something through October the 10th, uh, to visit the fairgrounds. As director of vocational and technical education, I have students competing out there with each high school, the high school, the high school every year. And so I'm accustomed to going in and out of the fairground. At, at any time, it may take some special directions and some, uh, supervision, but I think, uh, either one of those two sites that you mentioned, uh, the Busman Area, paved, big parking lot. And, uh, after it was brought to my attention, I made two trips to the fairgrounds area so I could look at it over real close. There's a lot of paved, uh, streets, lanes in the fairground. And, uh, I, I would just want everyone to be very considerate, uh, with the, uh, directors of the Fair Ground Authority, uh, making that available. I'm sure they are convinced that it will be an appropriate site based upon all the time they've spent out there. So thank you for working on it, continue to work on it. We want, uh, I think, uh, citizens in, uh, Southern Wayne County will be very pleased to know that that kind of effort will be made. And thank Mr. Quick for the effort that he's done to help provide food for needy and appropriate citizens in Wayne County.
And, and I do want to thank Mr. Quick as well. And, and he's been willing to work with us as well. He has met with people out at the, uh, fairgrounds. Um, we're, you know, we were just dealing with the issue at hand when it first started and we did not look at the long-term situation of when it originally started. It was like, hey, everything's shut down, it's in the middle of COVID, we need a place. So we found a place. But again, not knowing that it would be lasting as long as it had or the need would be as much as it has been. So now we just need to get to the point that we kind of formalize some agreements and formalize if this is going to occur later on, let everybody know the timeframe where and make sure all of our eyes are dotted and t's crossed.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, um, you know, uh, thank Mr. Quick for all that he does with his, uh, his food program. Not only does, um, that particularly location service, Goldsboro, but you have locations, uh, people coming in from Mount Olive area, uh, Princeton area, Rosewood. So he is making a big impact for, for Wayne County there, especially with the food distribution. And there's a great need for that program, uh, for Wayne County. But I would like to thank you, uh, county, uh, county manager for, for stepping up and, um, talking to Mr. Quick and to resolve the, uh, minor issue. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? If I might, um, you know, as we were faced with this dilemma, um, and it was brought to our attention that a number of people had complained within the community of having access to, uh, their doctors and to the community college, uh, and also to their homes. I mean, it did in fact cause some tr- a major traffic issue out there on Wayne Memorial in New Hope. Uh, and I think that the, uh, county manager worked diligently and was very forthright of stating, let's find a solution so that everybody wins. Because it is a very valuable program. We want it to continue, but we want it to be done in a safe manner so that everybody can participate without inconveniencing or having safety concerns addressed. Uh, so with that motion, uh, and there's no other discussion, uh, I ask for a vote on the motion and all those in favor of the motion as presented signify by raising your right hand. So if you will find a solution to this.
Right, and we, we'll, again, we'll work with the city of Goldsboro and see what we can do with the college on the traffic issue and the flow, uh, and then, but we'll put a, a deadline, you know, that, that by December 31st, that, that there has to be another option. And that we'll also look at the liability issues as well and making sure that, uh, we do have a clear MOU, uh, that is signed and agreed upon by both parties.
So between now and the end of December, it will be at the Maxwell Center and we'll be addressing those safety concerns and then moving forward with some additional agreements.
Right, yes, sir. Or at another location. And again, if, if the Busman Building works out, that we will then come back to the board with another agreement since that is county-owned property, uh, extending that, um, at that location.
Okay. All right, uh, we now are going to open up for public comments. So, uh, have we had those that have in fact signed up for public comments?
Uh, yes, sir, we have two. The first is Mr. Lynnwood Cherry.
Okay, Mr. Cherry. Will you come to the folks podium and, uh, give us your words of wisdom today?
I've been dealing with the, uh, with the Maxwell Building. I know y'all said that the fairgrounds. We need cement for the trucks to unload. You're talking about a transfer truck with 1,224 boxes, weighs over 30 pounds per box. You go out there to the fairgrounds, and I don't know what y'all talking about the fairgrounds. The Maxwell Building is ideal because of the cement and everything else. It ain't out there all day long. Everybody can end up putting up with for three to five hours of time in, out there at the Maxwell Building. That's ideal because people could come in and go out in Wayne County. We, as myself, have been out there my time, uh, helping unload the trucks and also loading the food in people's boxes, in the trucks and the cars and stuff like that. Wayne County needs the food for the families in Wayne County. Dublin, Sampson County don't have a problem. Wayne County does. I know y'all need to think about it, how much food that we distributed to the people in Wayne County. We're talking about 900 and then on top of that, families plus their kids and everything else that we distribute food to. And it's done by the government and everything else. Goldsboro, I don't know what's wrong with it. I've been in Wayne County all my life. I went to school here. I ended up a Vietnam vet, looking at America. And I'm 81 years old and I'm volunteering my time more so than anybody else in this People needs to sit and think about, it ain't but three to four to five hours out there at the Maxwell Building. They can put up with it. Police Department is not doing their job because that's in Goldsboro. They could control the traffic out there. I know the one lane, it's a four-lane highway out there. They can put up with it for four hours or five hours at the most and we are through with it. People don't realize it, how much we distributed food to Wayne County. People in Wayne County is hurting more so than people realize here in this room.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. God bless you. Hope every one of you have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, same to you, sir. Okay.
All right, we now have, I wrote it on my sheet, Ms. Shore. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, good morning, Sheriff.
I come forward with three items, but I'm gonna go to the first one. I don't believe we have people who leave this office that has given greatly to this community for the community not to come forth and congratulate them and thank them for the service. Ed Cromarty, I'm gonna start with you, has done innumerable things for this community, things that are not even known. He has worked with me and I chair several commissions and organizations, mainly starting with wages and things that he has done to help us in the southern end of the county that serves our least of these, our citizens. And I could not sit and let us, let him leave without commending him for all the service he's done. And he's leaving, getting to do some more projects. He and I have three initiatives to take to Raleigh. So he is a public servant and I believe public servants need to be commended for the work they've done. I go to Mr. Worrell. Many people may not know Mr. Worrell. His tenure has been short here. He is working with us for the children of the county here that are homebound to have food every day. People don't know what people are doing, but these are two public servants and I have worked closely with them, I commend them. And I know that they're not gonna start, stop serving our citizens because that's a hard thing. Some people want the glory and the acclaim of things, but they don't want to do the work that it put in to be a public servant. And a public servant is a person who has earned that because he first of all has given to himself to feel good about himself and that he can have others. And when you don't have that, when you're showboating, you won't be a good public servant. My final thing I want to say to y'all is, and I want you to give this much thought, we the taxpayers in this county, we pay our tax and you don't have a problem with us paying it, most of us. But we have been hit with this pandemic. My business has been sheltered for over a year. Yet I have to pay all these taxes I owe you and I guess I should because I have the stuff. But I am requesting of this commission to give some thought to giving the citizens six months additional time to pay their tax. You give them time, but it's with interest. And I'm suggesting that you hold the interest off for the six-month period that the citizens are trying to come together to get their money together. This is a consideration that is humane and needs to be given some thought. And that is why I'm here today for those issues and I thank you for allowing me to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, um, Ms. Bessie Yorborough.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I came to know the county commissioners and start working with that group back in the year of 2008. My mentor at that time was Commissioner John Bell. During the next few years, Commissioner J.D. Evans told me, well, since I'm from Oxford, North Carolina, you're from Mecklenburg, Virginia, uh, why don't you just come on a little closer and work with the commissioner? Because we need somebody to do the field work and we need somebody to help us at the polls. So I agreed and of course, you know, it's a small group of us, I'm not by myself, and we did help the commissioners quite a bit. And then, uh, after he passed, of course, you know, Commissioner Cromarty took his place. And not only he represented, uh, in, with the voters down in Mount Olive and Dudley, but he have a good area up here, right close to where I live. And he has a long area. Got through, you know, working and enjoying his area and he really did a good job. The biggest little argument I had with some of the, uh, the voters here in Goldsboro was the fact that they didn't, they couldn't identify him. They would say, no, he's not a black man. He, he ain't telling me nothing, that's an Indian man. So, you know, we had a lot of fun with that. Uh, even though I didn't get a chance to work for him when he was a principal, I wanted to be his science math teacher, but I didn't get that chance. So I did get a good chance to work with him during this long run, uh, you know, as he worked as the county commissioner for us. So we appreciate you, Commissioner Cromarty. We're gonna miss you and, uh, we know you as a great debater. You don't fuss with a lot of people, but you look at them and try to pick out the sense stuff in what they just said. And that is very good. So from District Two, from the, uh, I call us the A Team, they worked with you through the years. Uh, I would like to make this presentation, it's a card, something else on the inside. I'm not sure I can walk around and give it to you, but, oh, I can, okay. All right. Okay, you know I be coming back to my house.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, let me, uh, one second. Thank you very much, uh, and on behalf of, uh, Ms. Bess and Ms. Shore, thank you for recognizing, uh, us as contributing and, and Bess, so thank you for all the work you've done.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, then I'm gonna close out the public comment period and we're gonna go to County Manager's report.
Um, again, I do want to thank, uh, Commissioner Worrell, Commissioner Cromarty, uh, and also Commissioner Pate for, uh, the work that you've done. And, and you've got a lot to be proud of. And, uh, I want to thank you on behalf of your staff, um, and we know that the support that you've given us. So again, thank you for your service to our community. Do want to mention a couple of things, uh, as Commissioner Cromarty mentioned, uh, I'm sure he has this in ink, uh, the Sept- or November, excuse me, December 2nd, uh, dedication of the Southern Wayne Gym at 1:00 PM. So please make sure we are there for that. Uh, we are also, uh, this meeting will be recessed, uh, till November 23rd at 9:00 AM and that's when we will have our public hearing on the incentives for the hotel, uh, and the conference rooms that will be built, uh, as part of that. So, uh, we have that. Very exciting news for our community. And also wanted to remind you that December 7th at 9:00 AM at the Maxwell Center will be our swearing in of, of all commissioners and also our organizational meetings. So, uh, we will have a small reception. You're, we're asking that you bring, um, up to five so we can keep with the social distancing and the orders under COVID. But we're excited, but again, thanks to this board, uh, for the work that you've done and, and if you're coming back, we look forward to working with you again. So thank you. So thank you.
Okay. A question on that. You were saying up to five for each commissioner can bring five guests?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we've got Board of Commissioners Committee reports and we're going to go outside our normal where we were only reporting on our, our meetings and we're going to, if I, we're going to extend that to allow additional comments since we have some board members that are in faculty meetings. So I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Harson.
Well, one thing I'd like to say, I've enjoyed working with Mr. Carmody. Bill pays like a brother to me these days, so I definitely miss you. Mr. Whirl, thank you for your, your thoroughness, your compassion for the job. I think that's going to be missed on this board. That's it, that's the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had several events scheduled last week and due to the weather, in fact, we had three in one day and two of them got canceled. But we did hold the State of the Community event at the Event Center. And I'd just like to thank Commissioner Doughty for, you did an outstanding job on presenting it to the county, for the county. You stole the show. I mean, really, you, you did an outstanding job. Very proud of you.
And also I would like to thank the citizens that thought enough of me to reelect me for another four years to, for this board. And all I can promise is I will do the best that I can. I'm not perfect. We've made mistakes, but I think what we've done right far is, is far greater than the stumbles that we've had. And I just want to thank the people for having the confidence in me to serve them for four more years. And third, does anybody know what's going on at the Veterans Cemetery tomorrow?
Thanks, sir. At this point, there's a conflict and we're getting a clarification on that. I'm following.
You, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to follow up and find out.
I, I just had the request to send out the, to ask the board. There was not a lot of information that was given to me, so I apologize for not giving you.
I think the dates are mixed up a little, so if you'll just verify that there is an event.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to do.
I'll check with Mr. Chairman.
Because it's very important. I mean, you know, the men and women that's buried out there sacrificed so much for us to, and the least we can do if there's something going on out there is to show our respect and be there.
I'll, I'll try to clarify that today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carmody.
Same, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say a broad thank you to Allison and her entire staff. Y'all have done a great job making us understand what we needed to do and not do, where the money was concerned. Thank you very much. To the Sheriff Department, Captain Broden, Sheriff Pierce and the other gentlemen that have been here with you all over time, thank you for giving us that absolute feeling of security. I know that what you do, you will continue to do it independently of any, anything that's not within the range of appropriate behavior and so forth and so on. Thank you very much. And to the County Manager and his immediate wingman, wingmen, Assistant Chip and our attorneys, thank you all very much. Carol, thank you very much for keeping us straight. And thanks once again to my colleagues. Thank you.
Commissioner Whirl.
Once again, thank you, Ms. Shirley, for, for your comments. I greatly appreciate it and it's been a pleasure working with you and the community and, and we're going to continue doing what we have been doing. Thank you to the Wayne County, Wayne County staff for making the transition for me coming in easy. And the very day that I sat in this, sat in this chair, it, it almost felt as if I've, I've been here for a while. And that's due to you guys making it easy for me to come in and communicate and talk with you. Thanks, Carol, for, for all your, everything that you've done for me, answering my calls. To the commissioners, thank you as well. It's not over. I think, you know, I've been here for, for a couple of months now and, and I think I may look into this a little bit later, later in life. So thank all, thank all of you.
Okay. Commissioner Pate.
A lot of thank, the recommendation to allow me to stay on the hospital board. That is a very interesting boards, to say the least. It does take a amount of time to really understand the, how the hospital works. I do think, and I think Commissioner Harson will agree, that we've got better times coming. Got a brand new CEO that'll start in January. I mean, that man walks in the room and smiles, it just roasts the whole room up. And I think it'll, we've got better times coming, start to show us improvement financially, which I'm very glad to see. And hopefully on Monday, y'all will vote me back on there to keep me doing something. This will be the second time in 10 years, yeah, that I've retired. And you know, before I could even get out of my seat, I've already been offered another job back in the workforce development. I haven't decided whether I'm going to take that job or not. My wife maybe appreciate me working at least part-time to get me out of the house, but I haven't made that, that decision yet. I'm very glad to see the hotel coming. I'm glad you were able to make that speech to the, to the community. We all knew that was an important development for the progression of the center out there and hopefully there'll be some restaurants that are coming that may well be the gateway to Goldsboro in the future. That's what I'd always envisioned anyway. And Freeman, the reason I'm so close to you, you've got a pond and a farm that I can go out to and go fish, so. Don't be fooled. And, and just in closing, again, it's been a pleasure and I appreciate the public for putting up with me as well and allowing me to sit up here. And I'm trusting the decisions that this board makes and got new folks coming on, y'all will do fine. As I found out in my old job, before I even got out of it, there were already three picked by who won it is. So it's not like somebody, somebody will always replace you, I can guarantee you that. Thank you.
And Commissioner Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, you know, I've listened to the citizens here come forth about Mr. Carmody. I hope in my tenure here that hopefully citizens have come forward and say the same thing about me, that I've done a good job. I'm here, you know, in replacement of Commissioner Mayo, which is, was a good friend and sad time, but a good time for me too, to maybe get out and maybe do some things that I've been wanting to do since I have retired. Mr. Honeycutt, I thank you for making me feel welcome. Carol, Mr. Borden, Chip and everybody. I mean, and this board, when I came in, I came in, I had a calling when Mr. Mayo passed that, you know, I needed to step forth and I did. And I hope I can do as good as the rest of this board has done to continue the progress of Wayne County because I wouldn't have come forth if I did not have the good feeling that I have to be on a board that is so public. And hopefully in the meantime, you know, during my time here, that I can make some wise decisions that God puts before me, you know, because there's going to be some hard decisions and I hope I make the best decisions for Wayne County. And Sheriff Department, thank you for all you've done for the citizens of Wayne County too and continually doing. And I'm a big supporter of the Sheriff Department. They do a lot. When I see some of the videos of what's going on with the Sheriff Departments and the law enforcement, it just breaks my heart. But, you know, they always stand there with dignity, most of them. And I can't say enough. And thank you and I look forward to serving four years and hope that I can make some good decisions for Wayne County. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you, before you make your comments, can I say a couple more words? Help me out here a little bit, Sheriff. Has any of you watched the news last night? They had a tragic shooting in Greensboro yesterday at the courthouse. As some of y'all know, my oldest son lives in Greensboro. His office is right around the corner from the courthouse. And I talked to him last night and that, that, that community is torn. I mean, they just, they, it was, and they really don't know, they may know now, but last night, they really didn't know what the motive was other than, he'd say there was one person confirmed that would, had died and several more wounded. But, you know, when, when Sheriff Pierce came on, he stressed us several times to, I really think, he thought we were more important than what we thought we were. But we are the governing body of Wayne County and, you know, Sheriff, you know, guide us, you know, if we're doing enough, fine. And if, you know, not only the Board of Commissioners, but the staff, I mean, the staff is in here every day, on all four floors, not only just the county staff, but other, other departments. And just if you, if you have any ideals or your people, to help protect the people that work in this building every day, because the only difference in Goldsboro and Greensboro is Greensboro's larger city. But, you know, we, we think, things like that can't happen to us, but they can. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I am bittersweet today from the standpoint that this will probably be the last meeting that I'm meeting with this board and that I've got an appointment for the 23rd and will not be here for that public hearing. That said, I feel like I'm losing new friends and old friends. Not losing you, but we've worked closely over the years. And I'm kind of given a glimpse in regards to what goes on behind the scenes in being a commissioner. Being a commissioner is not really an easy job, by no means. In that you've got a, a board of fellow commissioners and we all have come from various backgrounds and have various perceptions and how to deal with those issues facing Wayne County. And even though we are friends, we have to advocate our position that we feel like is in the best interest. And just sometimes doing that, it kind of ruffles feathers a bit sometimes. So I, John Bell used to say, intense fellowship. But I think back and I think of Commissioner Carmody and I remember him coming on the board and Ed and I, and I call you Ed because I feel like I can call you on a first name basis, we would have many conversations and we would have conversations outside of our meetings. And Ed said that basically we've got to do something about our gym down in the Southern Wayne. And as I recall, it was like number five on the list of the school board on their capital improvement plan. And I'm saying, Ed, there's just not enough money there. And he said, we've got to find the money. We've got to find a way in order to get that, that gym. And it was tough. It was, but we found a way, didn't we? And with the help of Allison and others, we moved that project up. And when we got it included in our capital improvement plan, that was the first step. And then we had to go out and meet with the, the, the citizens out there, the parents and the students and the teachers. And what was an original plan that was going to be in the $2 million range, all of a sudden became a $6.5 million problem. Now, once you're committed to the project and all of a sudden it blows up to that large three times what its original budget was, I said, Ed, how in the world are we going to do that now? And he said, we got to find a way. He never gave up, never gave up and looked forward to that ribbon cutting. And people may not know it, but I'm telling you, if it was not for Ed Carmody, that gym would not have been built. Thanks, Ed. Bill, Bill and I came on this board together and we were just agreeing as I don't know what, saying, what in the world are we, we going to face? And we tackled it. We, we sat down, we went to all the meetings and learned as much as we could. And one of the goals that we immediately set out was building a new agricultural center. The Wayne Center was just outdated. I mean, it just was, oh my goodness, the roof leaked, it was just all kinds of problems. We said, well, rather than putting all that money in a new roof and an obsolete building, let's find a way to actually go ahead and build a new agricultural center. We reached out to the state. We actually had Troxler's Office involved with it. And we first saw a, a plan to build it out at the Cherry Hospital Farm. As that developed though, we saw the other need and that was the convention center. If the county was going to invest millions of dollars in building a new Wayne Center, why not partner with the city and build a agricultural convention center? And the goal and the vision was, this gentleman's right here. And he set out to, to one, get it. And as you recall, the objection was, how do you pay for the operation of this thing? Every convention center that's built loses money and it's a drain on the resources that are limited in a county. So how are we going to structure it so that it does not drain those valuable resources? And we sat down, we met with the city, we met with our legislators and we were able to come up with a way that tourism dollars would help pay for the operation. And so today we've got the Maxwell Center, but it's all but self-sufficient. Now, yes, we do have to retire the debt on it, but the operations are covered by other funding sources. And, and I'm just pleased that we were able to put a package together that was a conservative approach of finding funding, not only for the structure, but also for the operation going out for the next 30, 40 years. So hats off to this gentleman. If it were not for Commissioner Pate, we would not have the Maxwell Center. So I thank you for that. Commissioner Whirl, you stepped up when there was a, a real void on our board. John Bell ended up being one of my best friends on this board. And he tells this story and I'm going to repeat it. John was sitting on the end and I was sitting in your seat. And John, I came up here to sit down one day and there was a piece of tape that was put over there dividing off John's seat from my seat. And I looked at him and I said, what in the world is that? He said, you stay over there on your side with all your ideas and such, you stay over there on your side and I'll stay over here on my side. And I reached down there and I grabbed a hold of that tape and I just pulled it right up and I said, there ain't going to be no boundaries around here. John and I became the best of friends. He advocated and he and I had many serious discussions, but we always found a way to meet and you epitomize his ideals and I'm going to miss you. You're a great asset to us. So at any rate, with that said, we are facing a, a new venture come the first of the year. I'm sorry, the first of next, next month and I look forward to it. I think things are bright for Wayne County. I think that we together will have some intense conversations as we have in the past, but we'll find a way to bridge the gap and move Wayne County forward. Anything else before the board? And we've completed our closed session. So with that, I'm going to adjourn, recess our meeting until.
23rd.
Until the 23rd at, at 9:00 AM, at which time we'll have a public hearing on the incentive package on the hotel.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We recessed.